That was awfully loud, I'm sorry. I called to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for March 10th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Hello, everybody. Today is the International Day of Awesomeness. And I'm not kidding, that really is a day, so I'm not making that one up. So in light of that, be awesome. We'll begin our council meeting with two presentations. The swearing-in of our new police officer, Daniel Winters Jr., the Citizen Life Saving Award presented to Faith T. Holloway by the Gladstone Fire Department, and we will follow this up with the State of the City's Address. Our consent agenda includes approval of the February 11th, 2020, regular meeting minutes, approval of the January bank balances, budget report for period ending January 31st, 2020, or 2020, approval of January check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for February 2020, approval of intergovernmental agreement, also called an IGA, between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone related to planning services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lake Oswego and the City of Gladstone for warrant confirmation services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the city for fiber optic services. Our regular meeting agenda includes public hearing for ordinance 1499, mending chapters 17.10 and 17.12, which are R-5 and R-7.2 zoning text amendments of the Gladstone Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units, also noticed as ADUs, to become compliant per House Bill 2001, which is also referred to as HB 2001. Item number 13, related to parking requirements for the new Gladstone library, has been removed, and it's been replaced with item number 14, which is Resolution 1174 Designating Truck Routes for Gladstone, Regional Waste Water System Cooperative Agreement, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions, the Audit Committee, Library Advisory Board, and the Traffic Safety Advisory Board, discussion of city banking services, and review the draft process for processing correspondence materials and complaints against elected officials. Haley, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We have one correction, and that is on item number 16, under Audit Committee. Jeremy Riddle has withdrawn his application.
Okay.
Other than that, I have nothing else.
All right. Well, then, we're going to start with presentation number one, which is the swearing-in of our new police officer, Daniel Winters Jr. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Schmerber. If you don't know me, I'm the Chief of Police in Gladstone. I'd like to introduce you and welcome up to Daniel. Dan is starting a new chapter in his life. He, uh, we hired him away from Pepsi Cola Corporation. We're expecting the last 25 years, the last five years as General Manager at the Palpatine. Dan's a welcome addition to the Gladstone family. We look forward to him coming onboard, getting trained through the academy, which in fact he leaves on Sunday for the academy. And then when he gets back, he'll almost be trained. And we'll finish that off with his commitment to STO as foretraining officer. Right now, though, I'd like to invite the City Attorney, Chad Jacobs, on stage with your office.
I, Daniel Winters Jr.
I, Daniel Winters Jr.
I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon
the Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon
the laws and ordinances of the City of Gladstone
the laws and ordinances of the City of Gladstone
and the rules and regulations of the Gladstone Police Department
and the rules and regulations of the Gladstone Police Department
and that I will
and that I will
well and faithfully
well and faithfully
discharge the duties of the office to which I have been appointed
discharge the duties of the office to which I have been appointed
in and for the City of Gladstone
in and for the City of Gladstone
according to law
according to law
and to the best of my ability
and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
It's official.
One last thing. I can't sit down quite yet. One last thing. Did you guys use your jackets first? Yeah. Right here in front, in the jacket here, is my wife, Renee. My daughter-in-law, Stephanie. My son, Bryce. On the back to the right is my other son, Kobe. My daughter, Whitney. My son-in-law, Brandon. And my grandson, Connor.
Most important person.
That's right.
And the last force of the City of McMinnon as a police officer, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. Very good. Right now, a pending ceremony that's kind of started here in Gladstone, a tradition. For everybody who doesn't know, the badge is probably the most recognizable symbol in America today, and likely in the world. It's a symbol of sacrifice, service, honor, and authority. More importantly, though, it's a reminder of the oath they should just go, which should be a constant reminder of serving the public, right? Serving our community. Right now, would you like to turn on the badge?
Uh, my son, Bryce, will be on.
On.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Um, next is presentation number two. The Citizen Life Saving Award presented to Faith T. Holloway by the Gladstone Fire Department.
District Attorney, Bets.
Eric Stepple.
And blessings to the counselors.
And citizens.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight, uh, in the schedule to, uh, recognize some of our emergency responders and citizens in Gladstone. Cardiac arrest is something that can strike at any moment, and when that happens, you're not breathing, and your heart is no longer beating. Essentially, someone is dead. And without a quick response and effective care, there's a good chance they'll stay that way. Obviously, what we do is work and train very hard to try and prevent that as much as possible. But I do want to mention that it's very much a team effort, a team of emergency responders and citizens themselves, as essentially them being on scene oftentimes where we are, they are sort of the first responders, truly. The American Heart Association has, uh, what they call the Links in the Chain of Survival, and these links, when followed effectively, give someone the best chance of survival and reduce mortality. These links are early recognition of the problem and activation of the emergency response system, early CPR, uh, early defibrillation, uh, early, or early basic life support and advanced life support, emergency on-scene care, and then continued advanced life support and post-cardiac care. Tonight, we're going to recognize a number of our responders from a number of different agencies here in Clackamas County, who did an exceptional job displaying teamwork, attention to detail, customer service, and their collective actions resulted in Roger Holloway, who's sitting over in the corner there, who suffered a cardiac arrest to make a recovery and still be with us here today. So what I will do first is I'd like to call the emergency responders. As I call your names, please come up, and then we'll have you wind up in the front here. They will be receiving a certificate of commendation, and Gladstone Fire has a specific challenge coin that says "Secunda Vida," which is Latin for "Second Life." And, uh, these are only awarded to emergency responders directly involved in the care of someone in cardiac arrest that results in them surviving and going on to live a meaningful productive life. So this is a pretty coveted challenge coin that we issue. First person I'd like to recognize is Clackamas County 911 C-Com Dispatcher, Victoria Shoals. Victoria was the dispatcher who received the 911 call from Faith Holloway, and then coached her through providing CPR to her husband while emergency responders were on their way. Uh, next group is Gladstone Fire Department Engine 391 crew. This consists of Captain Patrick Roost. Also on the engine was firefighter EMT Jesse Person and firefighter Austin Figur, unfortunately, we're not able to be here tonight. The engine crew was the first fire unit to arrive on scene and provided that early defibrillation and emergency DLS care, and started the process, taking over CPR from Mrs. Holloway. Next arriving responder was the AMR ambulance crew, consisting of paramedic Al Bacon and EMT Brian Malden, although I don't think he was able to be here tonight. So, Al, come on up. Um, Al is obviously an ambulance guy, so he is very important for taking someone to the hospital to get that continued care. And Al was the lone paramedic on this call, so he had the medical expertise to provide the level of advanced life support necessary to effectively care for Mr. Holloway. Next crew I'd like to recognize is Gladstone Squad 390, which consisted of Captain Richard Newton and firefighter EMT Jared Sturzneger. These gentlemen were not part of our duty crew. They responded from home, being community members, and took the rescue. Cardiac arrests are often very labor-intensive, so we need a lot more people than you think to make this work, and so we were grateful to have them respond. Captain Newton's also an EMT or immediate, so that's a step down from a paramedic who's able to assist with the more advanced life support care. And just so you know, this is Captain Newton's fourth Secunda Vida coin, so he is doing fairly well with being involved in. And last, but certainly not least, um, again, like I said, our, these operations are very manpower-intensive, and oftentimes, it's hard for us to get enough resources on scene in a timely manner to really get the care, uh, the level of people providing the care we need. So we rely heavily on our law enforcement friends. Oftentimes, they'll arrive first to defibrillate, to provide CPR, to help secure the scene. And in this case, Gladstone Police has done an excellent job consistently over the years of helping out with crews on scene, moving the stretcher, moving furniture, team support. So I'd like to recognize Officer Mark Hertkamp, 2016, and Officer Andy Hutchinson, 2010. I'd also like to recognize Mark Hertkamp, specifically, because, uh, a lot of times we have an emergency responder, like a firefighter, who's involved with, uh, sort of being a liaison with family, to let them know what's going on and help out with some of that stuff. But again, uh, we're oftentimes very busy providing care, so Mark filled that role and was there explaining to Faith what was going on and what we were doing, and was very helpful to us in acquiring information. We often send firefighters in the ambulance on a critical patient, and Faith was not able to ride with the ambulance. Generally, we don't like to have a citizen family member drive after an event like that. So Officer Hertkamp, uh, took Faith to the hospital so she could be with her husband, and both officers worked at securing her house and taking care of some odds and ends after the medical care team had left, providing care. So please join me in honoring the emergency responders. Thank you. So, the last award I'd like to give is the Fire Department Citizen Life Saving Award. And again, I said that citizens play a big role in successful outcomes. Oftentimes, they're not trained to do what we do, and so when they perform that, it's quite a step and shows a lot of fortitude and bravery in a very stressful time. So I would like to call up Faith T. Holloway, who is the wife of Roger Holloway. Faith, uh, had taken a CPR class many, many years ago when she was a CNA, but I believe it's like 20 years?
Thirty.
Thirty years. So it'd been a long time since she had done or practiced CPR. Faith was instrumental in accomplishing those first two Links of the Chain of Survival by first recognizing there was a problem in calling 911. But then, in conjunction with Victoria Shoals, the dispatcher, uh, she helped Faith through an assessment to recognize that her husband was in fact in cardiac arrest, not breathing, and then coached her to performing CPR, which she did very well and effectively, until emergency responders were able to arrive on scene and take over for her. So she is definitely an instrumental part in this, and a model to citizens, as we like to have as many people trained in emergency care as possible. So we are honored to award Faith Holloway the Citizen Life Saving Award in recognition of the life-saving CPR provided to Roger Holloway on November 10th of 2019. Thank you, Faith. So that concludes our presentation. Uh, we will be stepping next door to continue our meet and greet, but I know Faith has expressed that she's very thankful for our efforts. We are very thankful for her efforts, and I'm sure Roger is too. So, excellent work, Faith. Thank you. You are a model, and, uh, we appreciate what you did.
Thank you very much. Thank you, David. You've tried to all of these. Yeah, every great man is a great woman. Thank you, God. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the State of the City's Address, but we'll just pause for a minute, so I can stop crying and let everybody out. Well, I hope you guys weren't expecting a quick meeting, because I've got five pages of State of the City's Address to read, so, um, bear with me. And when I cough, it's not because I have the COVID-19, it's because I have allergies. All right. It's a new year, 2020. That still sounds so strange. Like, just think, 20 years ago, when the world was going to come to an end because of the Y2K, what did we think 2020 was going to look like? Well, here we are, the perfect place to look in all directions. What was in the past, what's going on now, and what does our city's future look like? We finally have a plan, after so many years of making decisions based on what I suspect was a picture drawn on a napkin. So let's engage our superpower and look back on what has been accomplished. Our city has a new police chief, John Schmerber, a new fire chief, Rick Huffman, along with the new department leadership and a K-9 corps. When fairly distrusting citizens are telling me how happy they are on the direction these two departments are going, I know we've made the right decision. The Gladstone Senior Center has returned to full operation, continuing as our community hub, and will be getting an exterior makeover this year. We will be expanding our generational programs in partnership with the school district. The City Council has made communicating with the public a priority. We are spreading the word to every home and business via our city newsletter, newspaper coverage, public open houses, social media, and other communications channels. We're doing everything short of driving through the streets with a bullhorn, so I encourage everyone to look to these official sources for the news. There are five generations in our community and workplace now, and to support this diversity, we will continually strive to improve how our folks engage and receive information. Our citizens are involved in city business like never before. When having the difficult utility rate discussion last year, the council followed the advice of hundreds of customers who responded to an open survey. They preferred an option that became the City Council's direction. Decisions today are not being made in a vacuum. We want everyone to be part of the respectful discussion. The difficult part is how to engage everyone instead of just the vocal view. The physical changes are tangible and more exciting than ever. There are many projects underway right now. The first one, and the one that I'm most excited about, is our new Gladstone Civic Center, which will be completed in April, which is next month. This, this will house the City Hall and Police Department, replacing our existing building. And if any of you have toured our existing building, you know beyond the shadow of a doubt how desperately this is needed. The added benefit is this building will bookend our Main Street and help anchor our downtown revitalization. This project is the city's first to be constructed using the streamlined progressive design-build approach. I'm told this is out-of-the-box thinking, a novel approach, but really, to me, it's a no-brainer. You bring together a team from day one to help design and build the project efficiently, correctly, on time, and on budget. Wow. I'm not sure why this is considered cutting-edge. I'm happy to say it's working amazingly well. Funding for this project is through the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency, along with full Faith and credit notes and cash reserves. No additional property tax dollars are required, and the total project cost is $13 million. And I want to remind folks, this project was voted on and approved by the citizens of Gladstone. This new building is constructed to current seismic standards. That extra margin of safety is critical for our police force and emergency command when a disaster strikes. You'll be hearing more in the coming months from me about the need for community preparedness, and this building is that first step. You will be invited to the grand opening in April, so tune into the city's communication channels for updates. Below ground, while those changes aren't as obvious, but just as important. Gladstone's elected officials are committed to fixing our antiquated and failing infrastructure. Water sewer and stormwater systems are in poor to desperate condition due to long-deferred maintenance and lack of timely replacement. Folks, we cannot kick that can down the road any further. We recently approved a phased-in approach to utility rates needed to begin fixing the failing pipes, pump stations, and storage tanks. These investments are needed to maintain reliable water and sewer services. And I know you all want to turn on your faucet and have clean water, and you want to flush your toilets and never have to think about it again. So we're at the point where that wasn't a guarantee any longer, so we have to start fixing what's been falling apart. The City of Gladstone received funds from the Clackamas County Community Development Block Grant, which is also referred to as the CDBG, to completely reconstruct street and utility work along a two-block section of East Clarendon. The work included demolition and construction of streets, sidewalks, ramps, and driveways. The utility work included installation of new sanitary sewers, storm drain, and water system improvements. This past year, the city also executed an agreement with the Department of Environmental Quality, referred to as DEQ, allowing the city to make thoughtful and incremental capital improvements to correct deficiencies and protect the environment. And I want to highlight the incremental approach. We could have been required to complete immediate repairs, but the cost would be too big of a burden on our citizens, so a thoughtful incremental approach was considered and thankfully approved. Our 2020 vision also shows the importance of Gladstone's connections to our neighboring communities. In Clackamas County, our cities are interdependent. I would love to say we live on a lush, self-sustaining, beautiful island, but that's not the case, and here's what's happening on that level. Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone have agreed on a plan to bring a new library to our community. Our employees have been transferred to the county, and a library planning task force is involved with the design and programming phase for a 6,000-square-foot library to be constructed right here where the City Hall sits. And no, we are not remodeling this building as many have asked, we are tearing it down. We're updating our intergovernmental agreements with Water and Environmental Services and Oak Lodge Water to make sure our utility customers get the most, get the best, most economical service. And yes, folks, we are at that table. That in itself is a huge accomplishment. West also established a Tri-City Good Neighbor Fund that will help complete projects both in Gladstone and Oregon City that will advance environmental restoration, economic development, and community improvement opportunities in a defined area known as the Tri-City Waste Water Recovery Region. The Parks and Rec Board are actively looking at projects that would comply with their requirements. The outcome of this partnership is to build a greater community together through strategically agreed-upon projects that support our economy, ecology, and the community as a whole. So what about our future? We have projects on the horizon that will have a positive and significant impact on our citizens. A replacement for the historic Trolley Trail Bridge, allowing pedestrians and bicyclists the opportunity to directly connect to our neighbor Oregon City. This will bring people down our Main Street on a more personal level so that they will stop, shop, and eat at our local businesses, and connect with the river in ways that haven't been done in a very long time. This project will be paid for with regional transportation funds. An affordable housing project, which is the first in Clackamas County that's tied to Metro's $650 million Affordable Housing Bond, is being built in Gladstone. The mission for this fund is to house people who might otherwise be homeless. And our specific project will be for senior citizens, with a prayer given to Gladstone residents. We will continue to finalize our housing needs analysis and create a community engagement strategy to find thoughtful solutions for affordable housing. We will be replacing our aging underground water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure to provide reliable services and keep streams clean. We've received a $350,000 grant that will enable us to dredge the boat launch at Melton Bar Park, where sandbars have made the channel impassable. This is, this is a huge cost for our Parks Department, and one that would have been impossible if not for this grant. These aren't dreams, but are instead fully-funded projects. We won't be looking down a 20-year can-kicking path, but will instead be rolling up our sleeves and getting to work. And we do have some dreams, too, of course, like promoting trails and wildlife viewing areas at the Renearson Creek Restoration Area, Gladstone Nature Park, and along our rivers, revitalizing our downtown core and providing support to our existing businesses, enhancing our emergency management roles and engaging the community with its preparedness, completing a tourism and branding strategy for Gladstone, because we are so much more than a pow-wow tree, launching a grassroots corps of community volunteers. So if you're interested in volunteering, see me after the meeting, and I will sign you up. We're working on all of these and more. Gladstone's vision for 2020 and beyond are safe, thriving, healthy, highly qualified, engaged, accountable, livable, financially stable, stable, excuse me, vibrant, continually improving. So standing at the top of that peak, looking in all directions, we can see we are accomplishing a lot of these priorities, and we can clearly see that 2020 will be remarkable, and I think it's going to be our best ever. As your mayor, I'm passionate about the progress we are making and committed to seeing that progress continue. I'm not alone. I'm speaking on behalf of the six city councilors and 57 dedicated professional staff. We are a team, and that team also includes you, the citizens of Gladstone. We are 12,000 strong. I think that should be a T-shirt, actually. So in 2020, anything and everything is possible. So thank you. I know that was awfully long, but there's so much stuff that's going on, it's incredible. I know that was awfully long, but there's so much stuff that's going on, it's incredible. All right. Next is the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull number nine for a question.
Pull number nine, approval of the IGA between the City of Lake Oswego and the City of Gladstone for warrant confirmation services. All right? Anybody else? Would someone like to make a motion to approve one through eight and ten?
So moved.
Is that a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Tracy and seconded by Councilor Mercerow to approve Consent Agenda items one through eight and ten. Any discussion? All right. Approval day? What's the vote? Do you guys want to vote?
I agree. You opened for discussion or not?
Oh, I did open for session. Nobody was...
I don't have anything.
All right.
We'll just move to vote.
Yep. So, go ahead and vote, guys. Yes? No?
I'll move. I'll move that we vote.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. So, I'll move that we vote.
I don't usually have one pulled out, so I went, "Okay, now what do we do?"
I'm sorry. Usually, you just ask for the vote. My apologies for not being here last week.
I'm sorry.
Or last month.
All right. So, it's been second to vote for the consent agenda for one through eight and ten, so how would you guys like to vote? Go for it. Yes?
Yes.
I'm good. Yes.
Yes.
All right. And yes, it's approved. All right. Item number nine.
So, my apologies for not asking this question in advance because I just noticed it this evening when I was reviewing for the last time before sitting down right here. On page nine dash two, it mentions under, I don't know, paragraph number one, description of services to be provided, and the first bullet point about an Exhibit A, which isn't included.
Correct. I thought that might be a question. That's a generic IGA, Lake Oswego did, for just about every jurisdiction in Clackamas County. So, really what they're talking about for us is simply confirming our warrants for us. So, there's no, the addendums for others that want to enter property into LED, stolen vehicles, and so on, and that's not us.
Okay. Well, just confirming, because reading through, it seems like it's pretty straightforward as to what you just said.
Yes.
And you also answered the other question in that it sounds like everybody else is turning to Lake Oswego for doing this since the county has stopped.
Has opted out. That's correct, yes. So, they were gracious enough to open up their facility to us.
I'm sorry.
I would recommend that you strike the last part of that sentence when you approve it, and we'll just take out as outlined on the attached Exhibit A. That was a good catch.
Okay. So, just take out, take that whole part in, yeah.
Last part of that sentence out.
And databases as set forth, or wait a minute, no, as set forth. So, just in it, databases on bullet one?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion on Consent Agenda item number nine?
I'd like to move that we approve this IGA between the City of Lake Oswego, City of Gladstone for warrant confirmation services, with striking out the last part of the sentence under paragraph one as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, and then the next bullet point after as set forth and Exhibit A.
I second that.
Motion was made by Councilor Reisner and seconded by Councilor Mercerow. Any further discussion? Yes?
One last question. Did you guys look at this from our attorney?
Yeah, we looked at it for several clients. So, as the chief said, it is sort of a one-year IGA that Glad, or that Lake Oswego sort of put out and said, "Here it is if you want to use our services." But we were able to get a little bit of the language on indemnification and stuff changed for everyone.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item is correspondence. And as I've said in other meetings, I want to make sure that people understand that in order for your correspondence to be considered in the current council packet, it must be received no later than the Tuesday before the meeting. Anything after that will not be considered this month, but will be included in the next month's packet. We want to be assured that we have enough time to consider all the documents supplied, and receiving them at the last minute doesn't allow us to do that. And we have one anonymous letter that's been received. How would you guys want it read or not?
I think they've been read previously, and I think it's also a good example of what we deal with up here for everybody else if things are...
Okay.
Whether it's true or not true.
All right. Then I'm going to read it.
That transparency is important.
Okay. I'll read it. So, again, it was an anonymous letter. It says, "Gladstone Council, I was watching video of the council meetings and saw that Mayor Stempel is not voting. In October, a second vote was held because a first vote had been unanimous. Was it really unanimous if the mayor didn't vote? We're concerned about this because we think the mayor and council members should be voting or else they're not representing us. I've noticed that the mayor sometimes looks down at her papers during a vote so that she can't be seen not voting. My husband and I want to be anonymous because the mayor's large men friends are known to show up uninvited at people's houses to argue, which is scary. We don't want those kinds of problems at our home." That was the letter. So, I guess, since it's been read, I'm going to make a comment that, first of all, I'm not going to change the way I run the meetings because of an anonymous letter that was sent probably out of retaliation for something that never happened. When I vote no, I make a point of doing a roll call vote most of the time so that it's crystal clear how all of us vote. And if I didn't vote yes on something, when the minutes came out at the next meeting, I would be the first one to ask for a correction. And the fact that I look down at my papers, as you can see, I have a lot of papers on my desk, and running a meeting is not an easy thing, and I need to stay on top of things, so I'm certainly not being sneaky about anything. And if that's how they feel, that's their problem, that's not my problem, so...
I have one question for our attorney.
Yes.
A clarification, if you know, on what constitutes a vote, does, do you have to say yes or no, or if you don't say anything, does that count as a yes? Or how does... I read three-quarters of Robert's Rules of Order, and that was enough for me.
And you're still awake?
Well, that was probably thirty years ago, and I don't want to do it again. So, how does, how do you define what a vote is?
So, typically speaking, you need to make an affirmative action to vote yes on something or a negative reaction to say no on something. If you want to abstain, typically, you would say that you would abstain. You know, when you do a roll call vote, obviously, as the mayor was saying, it's easier to be able to tell exactly how everyone voted. When you're just doing a voice vote, typically, any sort of acknowledgement, you know, no matter how loud it is, constitutes the affirmative vote. Typically, as I've seen the mayor done in the past, when you have a voice vote like that, they say, "All those in favor say aye," and then any opposed, and that clarifies, for the most part, you know, if someone was opposing it or not. Otherwise, everyone else is pretty much presumed to be in favor of it. You know, if someone is truly not voting and just staying silent all the time, then that is an issue that the council could address, but in my experience, I haven't noticed that going on here.
So, as long as you don't say no, then you're...
Well, you should be...
You're not saying a yes.
No, you should be saying yes, or you should be having some sort of action to say yes. And if people are noticing that someone is not saying yes, we could certainly ask them to clarify what their vote was. But as I mentioned, in my experience, I have not noticed that going on here.
Did you want to say something, Matt?
Yeah. I mean, I sit fairly close to the mayor during these proceedings, and I've heard votes. I will admit, there was one time that I was caught up in the content, and I don't believe I maybe said a yes. So, I think that sometimes you get, as the mayor's managing business, or the last time when I was managing business, you know, you can get a little bit sidetracked, and you may not say yes as loud or as quickly as, um, but I've heard you vote, so I didn't see it as a concern. And frankly, I think we spent way too much time on this letter at this point.
All right. Anything else on that one?
I'll make just one comment. Being a mayor or a chair in the past for quite a few meetings, okay, one thing I didn't like about being mayor, quite frankly, is because I wasn't able to participate in the meeting as much as I would have liked to. I was more worried about making sure I was calling all the yeses and nos and...
Following the process.
And whatever. And so, from a fair standpoint, the mayor doesn't just chair as such, and sometimes you will drag, drag the wolf, so to speak, because there's too much going on.
Yeah. And that's why some cities only have a mayor vote for a tie.
Right.
Because they're facilitating the meeting.
Right.
Right.
All right. Anything else on that one? All right. So, the first is regular agenda number twelve, Public Hearing for Ordinance 1499, amending charters seventeen point one oh and seventeen point one two, which is R-5 and R-7.2 zoning text amendments. And R-5 is residential, 5,000 square feet. R-7.2 is residential, 7,200 square feet. Of the Gladstone Municipal Code, accessory dwelling units, also referred to as ADUs, to become compliant per House Bill 2001. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to have Joy Fields, who is our senior planner from Clackamas County, take you through our staff report and how we got to this point tonight.
Would you like me to sit up there?
That would be great. She's about to read my script. I'll have to read it next. I'll read after this one.
Good evening. The Gladstone Municipal Code has provisions in the residential zoning districts for allowing accessory dwelling units for primary residences to have a smaller detached or attached accessory dwelling unit on the same parcel of land. That has been the rule for many years. In 2017, Senate Bill 1051 was adopted by the state legislature, and it required that municipalities within urban growth boundaries allow accessory dwelling units for every primary dwelling that is there, and that regulations pertaining to housing were clear and objective, or had a clear and objective pathway. Tonight, we are here to talk about House Bill 2001, which passed last year in 2019. The reason I brought up Senate Bill 1051 is because it allowed local jurisdictions to have reasonable regulations pertaining to accessory dwelling units. In 2019, House Bill 2001, which was passed, determined that requiring an additional parking space for accessory dwelling units and requiring owner occupancy for either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling were not reasonable regulations. Therefore, they are not allowed by local jurisdictions. Now, House Bill 2001 is also called the Middle Housing Bill, and you will see more about House Bill 2001 in the future. However, this provision that determined that the owner occupancy and parking requirement was not a reasonable regulation came into effect in January of this year, which is why we are here tonight. The Planning Commission reviewed the chapters seventeen point one oh and seventeen point one two related to residential zoning districts, and they considered a lot of options. They considered just doing the removal of the parking requirement and owner occupancy for accessory dwelling units in those two zoning districts. They considered slight modifications to wording within the chapters to make it more clear. They considered whether or not to include a section in these zoning districts that pertain to accessory dwelling units used as vacation rentals. And the reason they considered that is there was a provision in House Bill 2001 that would allow the parking requirement and owner occupancy if the accessory dwelling unit had vacation occupancy. And House Bill 2001 defined vacation occupancy as defined by ORS 91.100. It became clear during the Planning Commission meeting in February, February 18th, 2020, where they held the public hearing and considered these two chapters, that an in-depth review of the code would be necessary, and that it would be beneficial to have public engagement and model code and a thorough, comprehensive look at housing if any further changes were going to be made to the sections. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommended on February 18th to remove the requirement that accessory dwelling units have an additional parking space and have an owner occupancy deed restriction on the books unless they're used as vacation rentals. And that was added to the end of the section of chapter seventeen point one oh and seventeen point one two related to accessory dwelling units, that if the accessory dwelling unit was used as a vacation rental, then the owner occupancy and the parking requirement would still be considered, would still be a requirement of that accessory dwelling unit. The staff, myself, as the contracted planner with Clackamas County, and the city staff that review business licenses for short-term rentals, would be looking at the site plans determining if the accessory dwelling units have the additional parking space and have the deed restriction of owner occupancy at the time that they are being used as vacation Since February 18th, the city attorney provided comments that it appeared to be appropriate, but that vacation rentals was not defined. And so, if you look at the Gladstone Municipal Code, short-term rentals are defined in the business section, but neither vacation rentals nor short-term rentals are defined in Section 17, in Title 17, which is the zoning development section. And so, the Planning Commission did not consider a definition for vacation rentals, but the city attorney recommended that one be considered. And it doesn't have to be considered tonight, it can be considered at a future time. But that is for you all to discuss tonight whether a definition for vacation rentals would be something that you wanted to look at tonight, or whether it would be something you would like Planning Commission to consider and bring back to you. So, staff, after reviewing and working with the Planning Commission, would recommend that you accept the recommendation from the Gladstone Planning Commission that is focused on the amendments related to parking and owner occupancy for accessory dwelling units in the R-5 and R-7.2 residential zoning districts. In addition, there is one slight change to a title. The code currently has the building code as the uniform building code. That title is no longer what is used for the building code requirements for residential units. Now, it is the Oregon Residential Specialty Code that is used when the building department reviews any changes to a residential structure. Knowing that there are changes that are needed in addition to this, I want you to be aware that in the future, you will see changes to the code related to housing and accessory dwelling units, and that this is to address the parking requirements and owner occupancy of accessory dwelling units as required by House Bill 2001. With that, if you have...
I'm sure everybody out there is familiar with House Bill 2001. If you're not, you should. If you're not, you should be. So, we're gonna piecemeal this, is that the intent? Is we're gonna just do this being our compliance little...
This one into effect in January.
This particular piece of it?
Yes. We don't have any pending applications, but if we did, they would be approved eventually by the state, even if we did deny them. So, we're just recommending that we do these proposed changes now, and then as I have kept you updated, we're working on the housing needs analysis, the code audit, and then also DLCD will have a model code out at the end of this year, so the Planning Commission can go through the comprehensive review. So, yes, we're only recommending the two changes to get us current with House Bill 2001, unless you also wanna add the definition of vacation rental.
So, the rest of House Bill 2001, did it also go into effect January? It did not, it's delayed.
Middles cities, which are defined as cities with a population over a certain amount, and large cities, yeah. Large cities, which are cities within the Portland metro area with a population greater than 1,000, so Gladstone is considered a large city. It would have to either amend their codes by July of 2022, or the model code becomes effective in their jurisdiction.
Okay.
And we are on time to complete the full review. This is the only one that we are not in compliance with right now.
Okay. Counselor Tracy.
Yeah, so, I need to, I'm trying to get this cleared up in my head. If we were gonna be doing something tonight with regard to definition of vacation rentals, we are not amending our code, correct? We are just amending this ordinance. I mean, because for code compliance, then we have to go through a much more arduous look at the code, the municipal code.
To add the definition?
Add the definition, or change things like square footage on the ADUs, or things of that nature. I mean, it seems to me like it, we can't pick one thing and add to the code, can we? I mean, that's why I'm trying to figure out whether we're amending this resolution, or this ordinance, or we're amending the code.
It would be amending the code as recommended by the Planning Commission. So, the DLCD has been notified that you are looking at proposed amendments to the Gladstone Municipal Code to remove the owner occupancy and the parking requirement for accessory dwelling units.
As that was generated at the state level, though, correct?
Right.
So, they're letting us slip it through, and not go through the full Title 17?
That's the cleanest tonight, is to just approve the ordinance, and we can deal with the definition as we do a comprehensive review?
Thank you, because I think that makes it clearer, and I think also because the ADU footprint is as small as it is. I think we minimized, in this city, we minimized the footprint based on Metro's requirement that all cities in the metro region have ADUs. I think we went with the minimum footprint.
200 square feet, I believe?
400.
Oh, it's 400, woo, they're big.
So, we are at the minimum in our code.
We're at 400 right now.
So, that's my question, I appreciate the clarification. And I lost, there was a lot of information for you to share with us. I appreciate how you did it, just tracking it all is what I was trying to do, so, thank you.
So, there will be other requirements that will need to be looked at, like the code currently has one accessory dwelling unit per lot of record, and it, to be compliant with Senate Bill 1051, it would need to be per primary dwelling. And so there are other changes that need to be done. But to get into the square footage, to get into how can we make this clear and objective, it's going to take public engagement and a more comprehensive look at the changes.
I feel comfortable with moving along with this and coming back to the definitions, that's...
Okay, and this is a public hearing, so we need a first and second reading, is that correct, or not?
Correct, but you also need to actually open up a public hearing and take public comment. It's a legislative hearing, it's not a quasi judicial hearing, but you still need to go through that process.
It's been so long since I've done one of those things, I forgot how to do it. Do I have a script I have to read for that one?
No, because it's the legislative hearing, not the quasi judicial hearing.
Any more questions for staff?
Thank you.
No questions?
Not this time.
Alright, then I open the public hearing for ordinance 1499 at 7:25. Do we have any public comments? Alright, then, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Motion to close the public hearing by Counselor Tracy, seconded by Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Just close the public hearing. Alright, any additional comments?
I'll make a call here.
Alright, Counselor Mercerow.
I was involved with the Planning Commission, listening to what they were doing. The Planning Commission had many questions about what they were really looking at. It's more complicated than it looks like. And a majority of the commissioners said, well, we should look at this, and we should look at this, and when do we do that, and whatever. And they all pretty much agreed, it is pretty complex. But the two items, actually, there's four here, but the two main items, the one regarding the parking for the vacation rental, okay, and that the owner of the property had to fly for that, okay, was a big thing, in that it really seemed like it needed to be that way. And the Planning Commission, to me, agreed pretty much that that's the way it should be.
I don't think we have a lot of choices.
Yeah.
We don't.
I'd recommend we approve it.
Okay, any more discussion?
What happens when you build a little house, a new property, and then after a year decide, I don't want a vacation rental, I'm gonna turn it into a rental house?
I think it doesn't have to be owner occupied.
So, the difference between a vacation rental and a rental house is nothing?
On a vacation rental, they have to have a business license, and we could collect transient lodging tax.
But if you go and build a house, if I wouldn't build a little dwelling in my yard, and stuck my mom in there for a few years, kicked her out, and rented it out to anybody in the public, I just built a rental house in town.
Yep.
Yep, that's the purpose of this law.
Yep.
Is to allow for more affordable housing opportunities for people.
And just to be clear, what the Planning Commission has recommended is that for vacation rentals, you still have those additional restrictions, whereas if it is a longer-term rental, you do not have those restrictions. So, if you did just to do a vacation rental instead of renting it to your mom, you would have that deed restriction, and you would have the off-street parking requirement.
But not the owner occupied?
Yes.
And still the owner?
For vacation rentals only.
For vacation rentals.
But for non-vacation rentals, none of those can apply anymore.
Okay.
Did I get that right?
Any further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we vote. You want?
No, no, go for it.
Are you sure?
Sure.
I move that we vote on ordinance 1499, ordinance amending chapter 17.10 and 17.12 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, removing owner occupancy and parking requirements for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, as required by House Bill HB 2001.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy, and seconded by Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, actually, let's do a roll call vote, since this is a...
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese? Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Simple?
Yes. Passed, it was unanimous, so we can go ahead and do the second reading. Would someone like to make a motion? Unless we have any further discussion for the second reading. Nope, would someone like to make a motion then?
Have to read the same thing?
Yep, just read that same thing.
Sure. Let me get back to where we were. So, I move that we approve ordinance amending chapter 17, or ordinance 1499, and ordinance amending chapter 17.10 and 17.12 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, removing owner occupancy and parking requirements for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, as required by House Bill 2001 of 2019? Is that when it came out?
Yes. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, oh, let's do a roll call vote again.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese? Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Simple?
Yes, passed unanimously, thank you very much. Next item was 13 parking requirements, but that's been removed and replaced with Resolution 1174, Designating Truck Routes for Gladstone. Um, no, that's been pulled for right now.
Why?
I have no idea, but you can ask when we're...
I will.
Hello, Chief?
Hello, good evening. Counselors and Mayor, John Schmerger, Chief of Police. I am here to amend Resolution 1174, amending Resolution 718, Designating Truck Routes Within the City of Gladstone. Additionally, what we're focusing on here is preventing through truck traffic also. So, when we look at this, it's a, this goal was a 2019 goal of the Traffic Advisory Board. We looked at it, and we're looking at the truck routes throughout the city, and it just, to me, it makes sense. When you come off the freeway at 205 at 82nd Drive, you're really getting into residential areas almost immediately once you bypass the McDonald's and everything else up there, up Oakfield area. So, when we look at this, we're looking at the complaints that we received, not only at Traffic Advisory Board, but from citizens about through truck traffic in the city, whether it's down Arlington, whether it's down Dartmouth, Exeter, Gloucester, or even Glen Echo at times. And that's what we're trying to address here. I have been in contact with ODOT. ODOT says that 99 is currently a state-regulated truck route. When looking at our Resolution 718, designated previous truck routes, we had 205 as a designated truck route through the city of Gladstone, with no through truck traffic on Arlington. What State, or, excuse me, the Traffic Safety Advisory Board and the Police Department is asking for is that we designate through our resolution, maintain 205 from 82nd Drive down to 99 within the city limits as this truck route. Also, call out McLaughlin Boulevard, 99, from the north city limits to the south city limits as a truck route, and then preventing through truck traffic throughout the middle of the city, with the exception of local deliveries only.
Okay.
I do see this as a safety concern, because we're driving through, we're driving tractor trailers through the city, through the middle, unless there's a reason for them to get there. I don't believe we need to, trucks should be coming through from 205 down to McLaughlin as a shortcut. Over the last two weeks, we've actually stopped a half dozen tractor trailers coming down Arlington that's already designated, not a truck route. They're either following GPS. Couple of them decided that they were gonna take the risk. During the Traffic Safety Advisory Board, there was a mention that trucks were coming down at 5:00 in the morning, because we're not typically seeing them during the afternoon. Well, we put our night shift guys out there, and we put, and our lieutenant, who's a firecracker on these truck routes now, and we happened to get six of them.
Wow.
Absolutely correct. So, when we're looking at this, we're looking at this as more of a safety concern. There's been enough complaints and so on. As you can tell, within the staff report itself, they have to be signed. And in working with Jim W. Nott of Public Works, we're able, we're capable of putting the signs up, likely will occur this summer before we can enforce. But with that, we also know that it's very tough to police. It's tough to enforce, to always catch trucks. We're not everywhere, we only have two police officers on at any one time, for the most part, except for an overlap period in the evening. So, it's difficult to be everywhere, especially when you're on calls. So, we do feel strongly on a communication process to get out to the businesses. I have attached a sample letter in your packet regarding that, how we would communicate. And then, also given an opportunity where I've also attached a warning notification where if citizens actually see a tractor trailer coming down their neighborhood, and we don't catch it, because we have to see that violation to stop it and cite it, that we can actually, if they get the appropriate information, we can run the plate and send the registered owner that notice, making them aware, along with the letter, making them aware of the new rules within Gladstone, so. I do recommend option three, which essentially has authorized the designation of both I-205 and 99, as stated above, to include no through traffic within the city of Gladstone, with the exception of local deliveries.
Your definition of truck?
Good question. Definition of truck right now, if you look on ODOT, vehicles with gross vehicle weight of 10,000 pounds or more, that is required to have a commercial driver's license or vehicle markings by ODOT would be considered. But those are very difficult to figure out what's 10,000 pounds and so on. We're really looking right now at tractor trailers. We're looking at the big rigs coming through, because it'd be too difficult right now. We'll evaluate how that works. So, when you're talking about box trucks that typically deliver mattresses or what have you, that are in or out of the city, delivering to residents, typically, we're not looking at those. We're looking at the big rigs coming down.
So, I would second that on the definition of truck. I think one of the directions we might go is go with the Class 8, and be really, I mean, to me, it's like, that's a good question, what's the definition of truck?
Right.
Because I'm looking for what should be in there. 53-foot trailers, obviously, you don't want those going down Arlington, right? Anything's Class 8, I think, what is it, it's above 28,000?
That's correct.
I mean, it would be really good to be able to target some of these folks who are obviously using it as a thoroughfare from 205 to McLaughlin, and, you know, we have a lot of the car haulers. I followed some of the car haulers through. So, I don't, I mean, I do agree with this, I'm just, I'm afraid we're kind of leaving the definition a little open, but we're gonna, are we attaching that to...
Well, I think it's more enforcement. I think it's more that what we can prove, and we have to be able to prove that there's a particular weight. Now, when you get a vehicle, a truck pulling cars, or a tractor trailer coming down, that's very simple. It's over 26,000, it's 26,000 pounds is the limit. That's very simple for us to do, a box truck isn't. We've had these discussions in the Police Department. So, we already know who we're targeting and what we're targeting. And so, to me, that's not an issue. We're not gonna put ourselves in a bad position to lose a citation in court, or...
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm really not, I mean, I'm not concerned about that. It's just that, you know, when somebody comes back to mince out the words, they're gonna be looking for what, you know, what is my truck?
Absolutely, and part of the letter is in there, I'm not sure if it's spelled out. I have to read it again. But if you're delivering within the city on the, say, the east side, we want you to use 205.
Right.
And if you're delivering on the west side, we want you to use 99. We don't want you to take 205 down to 99.
Which brings me to another question, Chief, maybe you don't have the answer, but do these folks, as they're driving, these professional drivers, they're like all of us, following Google or what have you, I'm assuming there must be some of them that are using programs that are telling them where not to go. I mean, I don't know, I'll look and see, I mean, I don't know if that exists out there or not.
Yeah, I looked into that, and yes, they do. So, ODOT's sending me that information, I have a list of people to email and send that stuff to. We're not gonna be able to do it alone.
No, right, but I mean, if you catch them, and they're, you know, they know if they broke the law.
Absolutely, and they know. We've given warnings up to this point, and I think we're tired of giving warnings.
Okay, thank you.
I just got one question, in that a truck is making a delivery locally, and I'll say, we have a tractor with three trailers on it, but he's got something for, in the middle of Arlington to deliver. He can still do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That seems appropriate.
Counselor Ripley? Councilor Ripley?
To your comment, I had my daughter's car triple eight home, and the guy followed me up till Hereford, and he turned down Gloucester and asked him why he didn't follow me the rest of the way, because the map in his truck said he could go down Hereford.
Couldn't go down, that's good to know.
Awesome.
So there are programs...
I, I knew there had to be.
I don't know how you get a road adage that, but they already, most of those guys already have mapping on their trucks that puts them on certain truck routes.
Well, apparently Arlington will be on their map.
And, and Arlington's the only one approved right now for no through traffic.
Yeah.
So we want, we want to actually post it on four different roads, the majors, to see if we can control it, because it's only enforceable on posted.
I think it's a great idea, because I think that when we get into the tolling issue and the question there, it's good for us to be ahead of it.
Yep.
That's coming up later.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Ma'am. So I want to, not a question, but just thank you for taking the bull by the horns on this, because for many years, as the liaison for traffic safety, we've had citizens, you know, come before the Traffic Safety Committee complaining about semi-trucks driving through town. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Because, I mean, yes, it's a team effort. You're not going to catch every one of them, but at least there's some teeth now to, to enforce. And, and the big thing is signs, which you, you know, have already mentioned, and...
I just think having something in place will hopefully be a preventative measure, and it won't come to us citing.
For sure.
Yeah, well, and I want to thank you for jumping on this so quickly, because I really didn't know this problem existed until a wonderful citizen reached out to me and let me know what was going on. I handed it right over to you, and this is where we are. So, thank you very much. All right, any further questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution number eleven seventy-four, amending Resolution seven eighteen, Designating I two oh five and Highway ninety-nine as the truck routes for, through Gladstone? Am I saying that right?
I would just read the title on page fourteen three.
Oh, okay. So then I move that we approve Resolution number eleven seventy-four, a Resolution amending Resolution seven eighteen, to designate a portion of Interstate two oh five between interchanges of Gladstone, eighty-second drive, and Oregon City, McLaughlin Boulevard, and McLaughlin Boulevard from the south city limits to the north city limits, as the designated truck route for the city of Gladstone, and prohibiting through truck, truck traffic within the city, with the exception of local deliveries.
Aren't you glad you made that motion? Wait a second.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Councilor Reisner and seconded by Councilor Ripley. Any further discussion, or do we have a card from a citizen that would like to speak? Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
That was a very nice, clear aye from everybody.
Next is new item number fourteen, Regional Wastewater System Cooperative Agreement. I don't know if staff wants to talk, or I can talk on this one?
I believe you were the representative that participated in the conversation?
Oh, yes, yes. This was the first thing I started doing when I became mayor, because our, our wastewater agreement was falling apart, and so I have literally spent, well, the first year, about every Saturday, talking about sewage in meetings, and since then, we've been meeting quite often. After three years of discussing how we're going to govern the, the regional wastewater system, we've come to a consensus. It's not perfect, but it's giving us a little bit more power, a little bit more teeth. So the people that are represented by the sewer district will actually be at the table helping to make the decisions. So that's what this reflects. It's, it's something that we want in place now, and then in one year, we're going to relook at it and see if it needs to be tweaked some more. Do we have any questions on it? Yes, Councilor Reisner?
So reading through this, I know it's, it's been something of contention for, for many years, in that the waste treatment plant, which was originally planned, built for Gladstone, Oregon City, and West Lynn, but ran by the county and operated, you know, or controlled by the county and ran by the county, and there was a lot of, I'd say, contention in regards to that, which kind of led us to this.
Yes.
But, so, so reading through it, what jumped out at me is it, it appears it's a lot like the Library District Advisory Committee.
Where it's a, another layer between the Technical Advisory Committee and the BCC, Board of County Commissioners.
Right. And some, and input by the users.
Yes.
Or, well, I guess so, as you mentioned in your mayor speech, the flushing of things.
Flushing, yes, yes. That's how it is right now. We would, some of us would have liked a little bit more teeth to it.
Right.
But this is what we came up with for right now.
Okay.
I can see it definitely being tweaked a little bit in a year, but I think we need to give it a, give it a try and see how it goes. All the people at the table are, are in it for the right reasons, and we all get along, and we're having very good conversations at a high level, and it's a team, it really is. So I don't think this is going to go sideways. Pretty confident it won't go sideways. Any other questions? And it looks like we have comment from the audience. All right, citizen?
Steve Johnson?
Evening, Steve Johnson, Gladstone. Yes, I have some familiarity with this issue. This IGA does nothing and changes nothing. City of Gladstone will have no more say in the rates of the west service area, or the cost of expansion that it does right now through existing advisory committees. The sewer district is governed by the Clackamas County Commission. With one possible exception, none of the commissioners live in the west service area. Their final decisions do not affect them personally. This is wrong. The Clackamas County Commission previously merged our sewer district with one that serves Happy Valley and Milwaukee without our consent. The merger diluted and minimized our financial investment in the processing plant in Oregon City. It also, it has also resulted in a larger processing plant that emits more odors, specifically the ammoniated odors that occasionally waft over Gladstone, and I noticed this morning at five o'clock, they were present. The only way to change this and to make final decisions as part of an actual governing body is to change state law. I'm disappointed that our city has not lobbied our state representatives in this regard. I know firsthand that they are open to discussing this issue with Gladstone. I would like to ask that the council not approve this IGA until it is clearly stated that all final decisions related to the governance of the west service district are made by the Clackamas County Commission. This fact is nowhere to be found in the IGA that is before you. There is absolutely no reason to hide it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? Would someone like to make a motion? In there somewhere.
So, yes, I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement between Water Environmental Services and the City of Gladstone, related to the Regional Wastewater System Cooperative Agreement. Is that...
That's good. Do I have a second? Is someone going to second it?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Reisner and seconded by Councilor Tracy. Any further discussion?
I've got a comment.
Yes.
I have been involved, as the last speaker just said he was involved, and the Wes, W-E-S subject, okay, has been in discussion for some time, and it often appears, to me anyway, a single person, okay, that all the information is not given out, and that this, for example, will it change anything? I don't believe it will, okay? However, I say that with a little bit of caution, in that discussion, just talking about it, and people not being happy about something or whatever, if you've got people in the discussion, okay, then you can improve things, I believe. And so therefore, even though I don't think it's the total end of the whole situation, it's a start to asking questions, of why this is happening, or why this is happening, and who's getting this kind of treatment, and who's not getting that treatment. So for that reason, I disagree slightly with Steve, but I think it's still got a long ways to go, but this is a start.
Yep, and that's what we needed, because the relationship was destroyed. And it's taken us three years in hiring Oregon consensus to come up with an agreement that all of us at the table could live with for now, and it is a starting point, absolutely. Councilor Reisner?
Well, I agree. I mean, I think going back, the, the three cities should, should have been the ones running the, the show, and as Mr. Johnson mentioned, the county has merged us with a bunch of other participants, so it's not just the tri-city sewage plant anymore. And then they even, they don't even call them sewage plants anymore, which I don't want to go there. But, so, I think we should approve this, as Councilman Mercer said, you know, we've got to keep talking, and, and maybe we can get, you know, things changed at the state, so maybe the participants, along with Milwaukee, Happy Valley, and those in between...
Oregon City and...
Yeah.
Everybody.
Can take over in, in the future.
Yep, yep, but we needed a place to start, and again, this has taken three years.
And we do need to be argumentative about what we don't believe in.
Absolutely, and we're at the table, and now we have a place, yeah, we are now represented at the table. All of the cities that are in the tri-city sewer district have a seat at the table.
And may not like our comments.
Yep.
But so be it. That's, that's how you get things solved.
Yep. Prior to this, our only representation was Christopher Balker on the Technical Advisory Committee. That's the only representation Gladstone had. So now we are at the table. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you very much. Next year, we'll be coming back with hopefully some tweaks. Next item is number, new number fifteen, Appointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. We have Audit Committee, one application received for two vacant terms, Library Advisory Board, one application received for two one-year terms, and C Traffic Safety Advisory Board, one application received for two vacant terms. One change is that the gentleman that applied for the Audit Committee has withdrawn. Staff, do you have anything on these?
No, if you move on to the Library Advisory Board, Haley can call each counselor and mayor to determine a yes or no vote.
Okay. Any discussion on Library Advisory Board?
I have a, I have a little discussion just on boards. I think we need to look at some, some way of having a little bit better evaluation process on people who are applying. If you know somebody on council and you apply, there's a chance you'd get on, but if you didn't know anybody, a counselor or somebody up here, you would never, you wouldn't have a chance. And I think to get the best people on the committees, I think we need to figure out some way of evaluating people and see what their strengths and weaknesses are. Somebody might apply for the library, and you might get to know them and think, you really fit this other committee here, and, you know, just because there's one opening and you get one person, do you just take people by default?
For sound and clear?
Does nobody else apply, or, I mean, that could be, that could be a great person for the committee, but I think you need, you need some options and some choices and some way of looking at people a little bit differently and evaluating, so...
We, well, it was haphazard.
Yes, Councilor Reisner?
I'm trying to still get in the group.
Yeah.
So, to that example, the library board, in, up until just, what, a year or two ago, when we went through and revamped the, the committees, boards, and commissions, they did interview prospective applicants, and then, and they were the only entity that did, and like I say, I think it was, was it two years ago, that we went through the, I'm talking, we, the council met and revamped a lot of the committees, commissions, as to membership, how they, you know, and, and we discussed, I shouldn't say we revamped everything, but there's a lot of discussion as to how we, they should be chosen. So, so it, it was recently, I'd say as a couple of years ago, discussed, just for some background, and this was, the, the process that has been in place for many years, and it was decided that, that would continue. Technically, the mayor is the, is the one that is putting forth the, the names for, for our approval. Don't look at me like that.
No.
But I mean, but I mean, if you look at the charter, or, or the ordinance, I can't remember where it states, but that's, that's the case, but in reality, you know, we, we take all the applications and take a look, and I think to some degree, you're, you're right as to, and, you know, looking at their, their backgrounds and their desires or, or whatever, but we've been struggling over the last year in getting people to volunteer at, at all.
Yep.
Which is kind of discerning, because I know, you know, back in the day, shoot, you'd have half a dozen applicants for maybe two or three openings.
Well, hopefully that will change. But I agree that there needs to be something. I would like to see more of an interview process.
That's a revaluation.
We tried that with, yeah, we tried that with the city council, I believe, and that was an absolute burning-up failure, so, yeah, I think we should think about it.
I don't know if I characterize it that way, but...
No, I mean, no, I mean, just the whole, the interview process, not you.
I understand what you're saying. No, that's all right, man.
No, it was...
I mean, I, I hear...
I got lots of flak for that. No, Tracy, you can add.
Can I speak? Okay. I, I agree with you, Councilor Reisner. I also agree with Councilor Ripley. I think, though, that the process, one of the things I'm noticing, I think maybe the process needs to be slowed down a little bit. I, I know we have, we have standing committees that have to have, they have a minimum membership. I believe it's seven, is that correct, City Administrator Beth?
Yeah, Planning Commission and Budget Committee. Budget Committee's the one that has to have...
We don't have flexibility in that particular commission, or that committee, correct?
Correct.
The others, we have some flexibility in, pardon me. So, yeah, I, I like the thought of vetting people, too. Excuse me, sorry. And, you know, maybe slowing the process down, or, you know, in, I was thinking about this today, there are some cities that I've, I've heard of where they will, they will have open houses for community involvement and bring people in, and introduce them into the commissions and committees and what they do, and what these, what the different staff positions are, are doing, you know, and they do this sometimes at the end of summer, and then at the time that they actually make the transition to want to allow appointments for this, or, you know, allow applications for the appointments to these committees, that happens with people who are kind of informing themselves in an open house, or in a setting where they're coming in a town hall or a meet and greet, and understanding, getting a better understanding of what these committees do. I, I would say that we could go forward with another process that was more thoroughly vetting and gives us the opportunity to get folks out there. Mayor, as you say, you know, people will approach you, I'm sure, and, and say, what can I do to help the city? What can I do to participate? Anyway, something we may think about, I mean, I, I agree with both the other councillors, you know, it feels a little squishy, because we do want to make sure we get people in the place, in place... It feels a little squishy because we do want to make sure we get people in place and get the, you know, people who are qualified and really want to get involved in civic engagement. So I would be willing to entertain, like, putting together a process of some sort.
For future or for this round?
I mean, this round, if we don't need to put anybody on these committees, I don't know enough about.
Yeah, because I actually like both of them, looking at their.
I mean, I could be fine with doing that, but what I guess I'm saying is that we probably should put together another process and try to do that, at the very least in the future.
Yeah, I think.
And in reality, we've got two people remaining for six positions.
Two people for six positions.
There's six vacancies.
There's six vacancies.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And one dropped out, so there's only two left on there.
Okay.
So, that would suggest.
We still have four vacancies.
Yeah.
Well, then, I like having full committees, boards, and commissions, but if we're not getting the applications, then we do need to leave it open.
I wanted to make one more comment. I was thinking some of the same thing. I went back to look at them and their resumes. And one of the resumes I couldn't hardly read, however, that person rewrote it and typed it, but then dropped out. And also, the one gave, I believe, gave an email address or whatever. And I guess there's a little bit, I put a little more responsibility myself, anyway, okay, that we can investigate more ourselves. We can call the people up, ask them some questions, and make an opinion also on our own to some extent. And may not agree with that person's thoughts or whatever, and may not want to vote on them. But we can take the responsibility, I believe, to really interview some more ourselves. If we don't wait until the last minute.
So, would someone like to make a motion to hold this over and come up with a process?
I'll make a motion to hold this over and come up with a little bit more defined process.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Motion was made by Counsel Ripley and seconded by Counsel Tracy.
Madam Mayor, I do have a speaker card about the appointment to boards.
Okay, that's fine. We'll just go ahead with the comment, citizen comment.
Okay. Michael Milch.
Before you vote on this, I'd like some clarification. Counsel Reisner, you referenced a time when we often had more applicants than we had positions to fill. In recent years, sometimes we've had just the opposite. We've had fewer applicants than we had, and that was often the reason given for postponing the appointment to a particular board. My recollection was that in December, we had a sitting member of the library board whose term was to end in December of 2019, who applied to renew his term on the board. But when we decided to, and there were two vacancies, his own was one of them, and then we had a second one. When we, when the council decided to postpone appointments to the library board, I think that person's application was not considered at that time. Now, he subsequently, I believe, was told by staff that he could continue on that board.
Okay.
But, and I think that perhaps for the Audit Committee, we may have had a similar situation. We may have had an applicant who had turned in a timely application by December. We postponed the decision, and I don't know the status of that application. It was not referenced in the staff report today. But I want to be sure that if we give an extension to these, that we have some understanding of whether people, citizens who apply timely are still under consideration or whether their applications are deemed to be no longer valid. I would urge you, at least on behalf as a member of the library board, I would favor acting on two applications tonight. The one for Bryce Colson, who is the person who I believe applied in December, and the new applicant who has shown an interest. She's someone I don't know personally, but as I reviewed her application, I thought she was someone who could contribute to the continuing work of that board through this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Bryce's application, I thought that it was just, it was voted that he was just going to continue on.
That was my recollection, too. And with the city recorder not here tonight, I don't have any background on that.
Okay, so that we'll have to look into.
Or the previous audit one that Michael referred to, either.
Okay. Then maybe we definitely do need to hold it over, and we have a motion and a second for that. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to hold it over, so let's talk, we'll put it on next month's agenda and maybe go into it a little bit more deep on what we want that to look like and what kind of a timeframe we want, if that's all right with you guys. And that gives us a little bit of time to kind of come up with some ideas on how we want that to go. All right, so will you have staff contact the two applicants and let them know? Okay. Next item is new number sixteen, which is Discussion of the City Banking Services, which is an item brought forth by Counsel Neil Reisner.
Thank you. So, for many years, we had at least two banks in town that, I'm going back, like I say, many years, that we, that the city used for their banking. One or both, they might have switched back and forth. And then, currently, we only have one bank in town, the Commercial Bank. But close by, we have a couple of credit unions, Clarkmans Federal Credit Union and also On Point. And I'm just disclaimer, I used to be a customer of US Bank, and I do have accounts at both On Point and Clarkmans Federal Credit Union. So I just, but I'm not here speaking for them. And my wife's been a member of Clarkmans since like the seventies. So, I know the good things that they do for the community, both. And I'm not saying that US Bank doesn't, but the underlying for me is that the credit unions, you know, answer to the membership and monies go back into membership. Whereas, US Bank is a commercial bank and the monies go off to stockholders. And so, it's something that has been on my mind for several years. I've talked to, back, I don't know, it's been a while, though. We talked about it once or twice with the City Administrator Betts. And then, when we recently approved On Point for some banking, it got me thinking again, and I just wanted to bring it up. And I'm not asking that city council say, okay, we're switching to any particular bank or credit union, but that we ask staff to look into switching to maybe a credit union that is more community-based. And I know, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I don't want, you know, maybe I ramble sometimes. Okay, all the time.
Is this something that you all want to consider? Because if we do, it has to go out for an RFP process?
Yeah, so what I did is put together some procurement of banking services requirements because we can't just choose a bank, we have to put it out.
Oh, okay.
It's a pretty comprehensive process.
Well, you beat me to the punch, Ms. Betts. Because, no, no, my question was going to ask. You do what you did. I was just asking the council to ask staff.
So, I think that staff agrees with you that the city of Gladstone has probably not gone out and done a request for qualifications in a very long time. But I wanted to put something together that the Government Finance Officers Association has put together a template of what is required. It's about a six-month comprehensive process to do this. And I agree that we do need to do it, it's just the timing of when we do it. Getting a finance manager permanently on board and working through this process. But you're never guaranteed that you're going to get the credit union that you want as well, so.
Sure.
So I just wanted you guys to have this information and to look at what is involved with going through that process.
Well, thank you. And you brought up something that I hadn't thought about, as you're right. Like we, you know, our legal services hadn't been done in quite a while, so brought that up. It's got to be at least probably fifteen years, or I would say that we've been with US Bank. Merchant Bank, which was over by Safeway, was the other one that the city did business with. And then, when they moved out of town, then everything went to US, if memory serves me correct. And that was a long time ago.
Counsel Mercer.
I just wanted to make a comment to this question, which we should look at at some time, is bigger, I believe, than people think. It's not just a staff thing. It can affect all or half our employees in the city also. Because if we change banking systems or whatever, then where the checks go and whatever changes. So it may affect a lot of people. My recommendation is that we use it for a strategic look at. I would recommend next year, since we didn't get on this this year, and do it then.
Yeah. Well, it may also be something that we could engage the Audit Committee to assist us with or the Budget Committee because they only meet once a year. But, yeah, I think we agree that we need to do it, it's just the timing of one.
Yeah, I think the strategic plan adding that, because next year, we start the beginning of our two, next two-year strategic plan. So, it actually would be perfect.
I do know that when we opened our account at On Point, I think we were the first government entity that they had for that as well. So that's a new market they're trying to get into.
Okay, yeah. Well, I know, I think the county has been with, I'm sorry.
No.
You're going.
Okay, wrap it up.
Has gone with Clarkmans Federal Credit Union, or, you know. I don't know if all their funds, but I think some of their banking goes through them also.
That's Tracy.
So, to echo Counsel Reisner, would there be, would we have the ability to be able to call for a local investment portfolio for each of these banks?
We could do that as well.
Can we add that into the procurement package? Or is it something that we could at least review as part of the procurement process when we're reviewing the banks?
Just like we did with the Gladstone Civic Center, where we wanted to try to use local subcontractors. We can, we can, I think we might have to pass a special resolution to do that. But we can consider that in part of the requests for qualifications or requests for proposals that we put together. And quite honestly, this is one of my reasons that I'll be coming to you as to why we need to hire a finance director, is so you have somebody with that level of expertise can help do this kind of work for the city of Gladstone.
Okay, thank you.
How do you guys feel about holding off until January for the strategic planning meeting?
I think it'll be good.
Counsel Ripley, yes? Counsel Tracy, yes? Counsel Reisner?
Yes, sure.
Counsel Mercer? Okay, so we'll just make sure that gets on the agenda for the strategic planning meeting.
Thanks for bringing this forward, I think it's important.
Yeah. Next is new item seventeen, Review Draft Process for Processing Correspondence Materials and Complaints on Elected Officials. Staff?
So what we've attempted to do is to formalize a process so that at each council meeting, you're not trying to figure out, what do we do with correspondence?
Thank you.
Do we read it? Do we not read it? Do we put it in the packet? So you've got two objectives here. One is to give me some guidance on some specific questions I asked in the staff report on what do you want to do with correspondence. And then the other is to have a different formalized process for handling complaints that come with elected officials. So if we take the first issue first, what I put in your staff report is I put the segment of the city council rules that talks about what your council agendas should include. And I highlighted in red that correspondence was added there. I don't know the history of how that came to be on your agendas. I'm guessing that it originated before email and the ability to scan documents and send them to you. And so, I guess from a high-level question, one is, do you still want to have correspondence on your agenda? And if you do, do you want to place it in the city council packet, which is what we've been doing? And the question is then, do you want to read it into the record? So that's my first question, is one, do you still want to have correspondence on your agenda? What we typically try to do now is if somebody mails something or emails something that's significant, we're able to get it to you right then.
Right.
We email it to you. Because if there's something that we feel like needs to be taken care of, we want to acknowledge the person that sent it and let you guys know what we're doing about it instead of waiting until a council meeting to put it in the packet. So that would be my first question, is do you still want to have correspondence on your agendas?
Counsel Mercer, is saying no? Counsel Reisner?
Not necessarily.
Because we do get them as soon as they're received, usually.
And it's still, you know, information that's open to the public.
Yes.
If, you know, someone wanted to make a public request for, you know, whatever correspondence that, let's say, I received for last month, last year, they would be, that would be available to them.
Just as a public records request for any of our communications.
Exactly, yeah.
It's to the public.
Counsel Tracy?
Yeah, I mean, I, lately, it's, there've been letters that are just, there's no name attached to them. You know, I don't know that they're factual. Personally, I think that we're at the point where I don't see any use for it at this point. I agree with the mayor, I mean, and Counsel Mercer. We get this information through the email. We review it, and I think if it was something pertinent enough to bring up at a meeting, we would bring it up at a meeting. If it's true correspondence that's talking to us about a policy issue or a business for the city or what have you, then I think we're going to bring that up in the meeting. You know, plenty of correspondence that comes in that's just attacking a counselor or attacking a citizen or what have you. I'm just not interested at this point. I think it's not useful and it's not really.
Not business.
It's not business for the city.
Yeah. Counsel Ripley?
I think correspondence can be good, but you need to have good correspondence and bad correspondence. And it seems like all we get is bad, so I'm not sure if there's any point in it.
But the complaints can, I mean, we'll still get emails.
Yeah, we'll still get them.
We still have plenty of emails that we all go through every week, so.
But if it was mixed in.
I'm comfortable with it not being there.
If it was mixed in with an attaboy every once in a while, it'd make it, it'd make it a mess with everyone's minds.
Well, you're a politician. Good luck on the attaboy.
I got one a couple of days ago from somebody.
Well, good. You're doing better than I am.
Knocked me off the chair.
All right, and the crazy ones, which I get on a regular basis, go directly to the police department. So I'm sorry that you guys don't get copied in on those, but I've had three this week, so.
I'd rather not look at them.
Yeah, so those are in their file.
So do we have a consensus that we want to amend our council rules so that we do not have to have correspondence?
I believe that's the case.
I would agree.
So, number one is no, which means that we don't need to answer number two.
Okay.
Can I, so can I back this up a little bit? But this is not precluding citizens from making comments about sitting councillors or the sitting mayor. I want an affirmation from staff.
That's correct. We are keeping business from the audience on the agenda.
Correct.
So anybody can still come up. So anybody can still come up and talk during public comments.
And anyone can send a letter to City Hall, directly, speaking directly about a counselor or a mayor. We're not keeping anyone from making complaints, or filing grievances, or giving atta boys.
That's correct.
Okay, I wanna make sure that's.
But we would like atta boys.
Crystal clear.
Let's get that out there.
Yes.
Crystal clear.
And, and, so, an example I can give you of where that would be different, is if somebody sent you a letter because they wanted to talk to you about, um, something that's on the agenda. We would put it in the packet under that agenda item.
Right, that's relevant.
It just would not be under correspondence.
Yeah.
That's, thank you, thanks for the clarification.
All right, next is process to address complaints against.
Hi, Mayor.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Come on up, Bill.
Uh, Bill Osborne? Bill Osborne, uh, live in Gladstone, I'll give you a, an atta people, since you're not all boys up there. Uh, and I appreciate you guys looking at putting these policies in place, because, you know, this is gonna do away with, I hope, a lot of the squabbling, a lot of the, the stuff, um, that results in anonymous letters. So I, I, the correspondence things, I, I, I agree with you on that, if it has to do with business on the agenda, maybe, you know, it's worth reading into the record, or at least it's on the record.
Mm-hmm.
These anonymous letters that keep going back and forth and stuff, um, that just doesn't do anybody any good. One thing I hope you all know, if I write a letter, I'm gonna put my name on it. I always have, I'm not shy about that. So, on the policy, I just had a couple comments, um, one of them was the use of executive session on, on these, and I would hope as elected officials, if there's complaints, that could either be done in the open, or I believe one of the other options was a third party. Uh, I know there was an investigation on a counselor over a voting issue, that the, um, county clerk used a third party investigator. And I think that's where we get the most impartial, uh, look into it. And I think that's gonna give some finality to things, instead of stuff just kinda being up in the air, so people can kinda comment and throw their opinions in, and, and I know some of you probably think I do that, and I, well, I probably do at times. Uh, we all have our opinions, and there's something good to have, just that finality, that if you make a complaint, it's looked at seriously, and it's looked at impartially, and if there's an issue there, it's, it's addressed, and then we move on. Everybody makes mistakes, you know, um, I don't expect anybody to be perfect. I just like when a mistake is made, there's accountability taken, and, and then we can move on. And I think that was it, the only other question I had is it said on, uh, possible reasons to investigate, and I'm not sure in the language here, under the influence of intoxicants or prescribed, and then parentheses, non-prescribed drugs. So I don't know if that meant, if you guys were hopped up on Xanax or something, that you weren't prescribed, if, if that's what that means, or if that's a, a language issue, so, uh, just wanted to bring that up. And I think everything else is, is covered, I think this is a great start, and, uh, I appreciate you guys doing this. I've been asking for it for a while, and I know some of you have, have been in favor of this, and hopefully, moving forward, this'll help to create a little bit of, well, I won't say peace, but a little bit, uh, less discord in, in our city, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill, thank you.
Can I say something, and fill out a card afterwards, or do you go? Could just fill out the card, we'll probably have a little bit more discussion on this, and then I'll call you up. All right, discussion on process to.
Did you wanna move on to the process?
Yeah, let's move on to the process.
Okay, so correspondence is a separate issue, we've dealt with that.
Yep.
Now, we're trying to formalize a process to address complaints against elected officials. So currently, um, in the city council rules, you have section G, council member conduct. And so what I put in your staff report is what is currently there. Section one talks about representing the city, section two is censure, and that is your current process that you have in your council rules for, if a complaint was filed on an elected official, of what you must follow. We've had that in our rules since I've been here, we've had complaints, but the council as a body has not made a decision on whether or not they wanted to use this section. So what we attempted to do is to see what other jurisdictions are doing, and I got one county, in Clamath County, that had a process. So really, I tried to take what they had and modify it to a local jurisdiction's process. And that is what you have on Exhibit A, which starts on eighteen dash four. So really, what I want to know is, do you want to continue with what's currently in your city council rules and just actually use them? Or do you want to adopt something completely separate, like Exhibit A?
Mm-hmm.
And take out section two censure, and replace it with Exhibit A? So basically, in Exhibit A, it talks about if there's an alleged violation. I did put in here that it has to be in the form of a written and authored, so you wouldn't accept anonymous complaints. And you would accept them, but not investigate them.
Okay.
And then I drafted out what the policy would look like, and then the highlighted areas, starting with under procedure, is that in the county's, um, policy, they had, uh, the city administrator and/or an HR official. So my question to you is, do you want the city administrator or another elected official, not affiliated with the alleged violation, um, to be part of that? I'm trying to remove you guys specifically, uh, to participate in that. So the highlighted areas are where I need some guidance on how you would like that to be worded. If this is something that you want to go down that road.
I think it's a great idea. How do you guys feel? That way, we're not in the middle of it, it's not on our shoulders to make these decisions, because it's an uncomfortable place to be, to censor one of our own. Any comments? Do we wanna table this?
I, I, you know, to be honest with you, Mayor, I mean, I'm sorry, I'll put my card up there.
Yes.
I, I would table it, um, there's some language in here I would wanna discuss and, and get some more information on. Um, I, I think it's a good direction, I think we're headed in the right direction. I, I hear the citizens, um, loud and clear, I agree with you, it's hard to go through a censorship process, but there are some things in here I would, I would wanna talk about, before we were to just go forward with this. We can go forward with, uh, let me, I guess, let me back up and clarify. We can go forward with the process, and language notwithstanding.
So, tonight, we're only having a conversation, and I would bring something back at a later date for you to adopt.
Okay.
I need direction to move forward on these highlighted areas.
Okay, thank you, I, I, sorry, I jumped ahead.
No.
So yes, I, I would say that we work closely with city administrator, and us, and the staff, and, and put together a pro, a.
Language that works for us.
Process that we can do this, yeah.
Okay, so, how do you guys feel, do you want?
I agree.
Councilor Merschro? Okay, so just table this and put it on the agenda for next, next month?
Yeah.
Yes? Councilor Tracy?
I just thought we had a comment.
Oh, we have a comment, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah.
Well, yeah, we're gonna table it, but go ahead.
Natalie Smith?
Oh, we might not. It's an afterthought to what you were discussing, if you're doing policies on, for council rules and whatnot. I think it's important to consider that there should be some guidelines for people to get up and address the city council. Um, because we, as observers and audience members, should speak to you with respect. We're not always gonna have constructive criticism, but it should be done in an appropriate manner, and there's many times it hasn't been. So I would hope and impress upon you, if you're looking at setting policy, that that's a vital, important one that we need to look at, is how elected officials are spoken to. Um, if you go to any, if you've been to the state capitol, and you know individuals, certain individuals don't care for anybody, it's still done in a very respectful manner. And unfortunately, there's times I've sat in the audience and cringed, when people were spoken to in a way that made me deeply uncomfortable, because it wasn't right. So regardless of what the issues are, we're not always gonna agree, but it needs to be done in a, in a respectful manner, and I think we need to look at guidelines and rules for the audience members that approach you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We agree.
So when you say table it for next month, what are you hoping to accomplish by next month? If I don't get guidance to modify language? Are you individually going to provide me feedback on the areas that we need it, or?
I think that makes sense. So over the next month, we'll just get back to you individually on the highlighted areas, what we would like, and then we'll hash it out at the next council meeting.
Yeah, this is, I'm doing this for you guys, so you tell me what, what you wish.
Thank you, I just, I wanna get this wrapped up as soon as possible, I don't want this to be a three month, four month, five month process, I'd like to get this done. So I'm real hesitant to push it beyond next month.
I, I, I mean, I, speaking for myself, it, it, May would be preferable to me.
May?
Yeah.
So, well, April is a very busy month, we've got a lot of stuff, that's fine, I'm okay with that.
Because we're gonna be up against moving in, doing all that.
Yeah.
And this, this, to me, this looks like some work, we're gonna, we're gonna need to take it on a little bit.
This may work for you, Councilor Merschro?
Fine.
Councilor Reisner?
Fine.
Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
And Councilor Tracy, of course, yes, so let's put this on the May agenda, in the meantime, we'll have discussions and, about the highlighted areas, and if this needs to be tweaked anymore.
Okay, oh, yeah, I'm good with that, I just think we're pushing a lot towards April.
Would you like me to hold off on bringing back the correspondence piece too? Or do you want that to come back?
No, I think we're good, I think we're good on the correspondence.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's it for our agenda items, next is business carried forward. Does anybody have anything? So, did you want to bring up this one, two hour versus four hour parking, on Portland Avenue?
We were talking to Public Works about that still.
Do you wanna bring it up?
We can.
Then we can at least have it for.
Okay, we'll put it up.
Okay, so, does anybody have business carried forward, 'cause I have some things. Okay, the first is the four-way stops at the intersections at Max Patterson Park, on Cornell, at Exeter, and Fairfield. Um, currently, it is only a two-way stop. Um, it was recommended by both the Traffic Safety Advisory Board, the Parks and Rec Board, and then, um, re, approved by the city council, but we were told that we needed a traffic study in order to add those four additional stop signs. And I have an issue with that, because after spending a lot of time driving down that road, I don't know if people realize that there are no sidewalks. And trap park, cars are parked along all roads, and people, kids going to school, people walking their dogs, and fathers wheeling their strollers around, are walking in the middle of the street. There's three times every day during school hours, that that is an incredibly busy intersection, because the grade school is right there. In the summer, when the grade school isn't open, we have a very, very active park with a splash pad that has a ton of little kids running around. And the traffic study may say that it doesn't warrant slowing traffic down, but it has to be slowed down. We need safer routes to school, that's so important, we're not in a position to put sidewalks in. So this is the simplest, easiest way to slow traffic down, in I, what I think is a, is a very dangerous area. So, it was approved by city council, what do we have to do to make it happen? I looked to see if there was any federal rules stating that we couldn't do this, and I could not find anything. Neil, I know you've looked at this too.
So, yeah, so, um, I have, with, uh, the, um, completion or near completion of, uh, East, um, Clarendon Street, those couple of blocks, uh, there was a, um, a stop sign on East Clarendon, um, at Chicago that, um, wasn't, wasn't replaced. And so I talked to Director Why Not, and he said, because as, you know, the national, and I don't know the long word, some, you know, um, manual says that it doesn't, doesn't qualify. And, um, but I said, well, city council, several years ago, um, made a, you know, made a decision that, uh, stop signs were gonna be, well, there and, and several other places here in town. One is on Beatrice and, and East Clarendon, near my house. And, um, so, um, he gave me, you know, the, um, information website, so I, I looked at the ORS, the Oregon revised statute, the Oregon administrative rules, and, uh, and also this manual. And, um, I don't, I also don't see where it prevents city council, um, from making decisions here locally for the safety of our, our citizens, or people traveling through town, um, versus somebody in Washington DC, three thousand miles away.
So, we already approved it, so what do we have to do to get those signs in?
So somewhat like you approved tonight for designating truck routes, that's a, that's a home rule authority type action.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so, we can look into that more to see.
Yeah, we want the signs up.
What other steps we could take for that.
Okay, yeah.
And that's for the four-way stop signs.
Yep, the four-way stops at the corner of Cornell, Exeter, and Fairfield, right there at the end of Max Patterson Park.
Right, and then we, Councilor Reisner, are you wanting the stop signs back on East Clarendon as well? Or are we just using that as a?
Well, no, I, they, they've been there for, I don't know, twenty years, or, you know, I can't remember.
Is it East Claritin, I'm sorry, East Clarendon to the Chicag, you said Cross Street, Chicago?
I believe it's Chicago, isn't it?
I'm try, I'm trying to figure it out, it's, it's my neighbor.
It's right there by, uh, Uncle Alf.
That's Chicago.
That's Chicago.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and they've been there, you know, uh, I would say at least twenty years, 'cause, um, uh, Fire Marshal Funtz was my neighbor.
Okay.
And, uh, at, at the time, he was just a, a firefighter, and, uh, his kids were.
So does that mean that you want them back?
So.
So the question, I, I guess I.
Well, mine is that, that city council had, um, authorized and wanted them there, and that I think they should be reported.
Is that, so is it on, is the stop sign on Clarendon, or is it on the Chicago side?
No, no, it's, it's.
Clarendon.
Clarendon.
Okay.
Going, so if I was to go from.
So can you get Jackie the information?
And, and I know what both of you are talking about, so I will follow up to see what we can do about that.
Great, thank you, I just don't wanna see anybody get hurt there. Um, the other thing was something that the, some of the business owners brought up to, um, Councilor Tracy and I, is the, um, two hour versus four hour parking signs on Portland Avenue? Councilor Tracy probably has more to say about that than I do.
I just, it's been two years, the conversation's kept going, and, and I think at some point, it would be good for us to at least review why we're in a four-hour zone there, um, in the business district. Um, you know, Director Why Not and I've had conversations about this. The business group did bring it up, uh, again, in the meeting that they had with the mayor and I. So, uh, we just, it's, we, we'd rather go to two hours, so that we can let these folks have that stop and go business trade that they need, instead of it being, you know, the parking area being, or the zone being utilized as a long-term parking throughout the day.
Right, and I think it's a good time to do that with us, moving out of this building.
Yeah.
And just looking at enforcing parking in this area altogether. And I think there's also recommendations in the downtown revitalization plan about parking and all that, so.
Right, and the, those zone changes are, I believe, in the plan, and then there was some flexibility in other zone changes, so.
Okay, and I think, do we have someone that wants to speak on that?
Uh, this is about the stop signs.
Oh, yeah, come on up.
Um, Lisa, I'm gonna totally butcher your last name. Lisa Westifer.
Oh.
I just moved to Gladstone, um, almost a year ago, and I live on Clarendon. And, yes, and we moved in about a week, right before the construction started, um, and.
Sorry.
Yes, and then it kept going and going and going, and it's finally done, and we've been waiting for the stop sign to go back to Chicago, and it has not, and where we, where our house is, we are a block from the main drag on, uh, Portland. And so, all day long, doesn't matter what time of day, doesn't matter weekend, middle of the day, um, people now speed down that street, because there is no stop sign, and there's nice fancy blacktop. So, um, I called, uh, I guess it was the City Works people.
Public Works.
Um, and they got back to me and said, sorry, we can't do that, but you could maybe talk to Gladstone PD, and that was kinda where it was left. So, we are also hoping that we can get that stop sign back. We have a little four-year-old, and there's also little kids that live one street, or one house next to us, that have three really little kids, and they all like to play outside. So, it'd be really nice to have a safe street, now that it's finished.
So there's no traffic calming anymore at all on Clarendon, where they do work?
None, there is no stop signs anywhere on Clarendon now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Stop sign put in there, 'cause that, there used to not be a stop sign there.
Right. Right. So, well, if I may give you a little- little history.
There was.
Up, yeah, up one block.
So city council, back, like I say, I- about twenty years ago or so, placed stop signs in multiple places around the city. Like I say, on West Clarendon, where I live, near, uh, Beatrice was- was one. As- as mentioned earlier, you know, we have a US Bank branch in town. Well, it's Clarendon and McLaughlin. And Friday afternoon, it was almost like a freeway down Clarendon because everybody's headed to the bank wanting to be off of Arlington. And so city council put- put a stop sign there to slow people down along with the one at East Chicago and- and East Clarendon, you know, just down from you.
We definitely need to relook at that.
Yeah, so it's just, like I say, a little history.
Okay, and next month is our joint work sessions with Traffic Safety, uh-
Two weeks.
No, it's-
Two weeks, in two weeks. So that might be something good to bring up with that group as a work plan.
That intersection has killed one person.
Well, then we definitely need to-
Like, the friend I was growing up with hit and killed right there.
Okay, well, we'll- we'll definitely talk about that at that meeting. All right, any other business carried forward? Nope. All right, business from the audience. Les Poole?
Hey, Les, you only got three here.
I'll get you more.
We'll share. Yeah.
Les Poole, I live on Cornell Place. Been involved in land use a long time, been around a lot of contracts. And as you know, I've had concerns about the Webster Road property in the past and about its legal status and conflicting resolutions. And I expressed some of them again when the IGA was approved with the county for the library. And in putting away a bunch of files and storing it away recently, I discovered some anomalies, and old questions and new questions arose. And I came across a letter that talks about ORS Chapter 35, and what do you do if for some reason you wanna disperse property that you've condemned? Let me make it very clear. I'm not here to discuss selling of the Webster Road property. I'm not here to promote that. I'm here to share with you that there are a lot of restrictions on the use of that property. I believe we have some legal exposure in this community because of the vagueness of interpretation of stipulated judgment and some of the designations that property has received. It's currently four tax lots. By resolution, it's all a library site. That resolution circumvented the 2007 resolution that established the nature park in the spirit of the taking and the resolution of necessity. When property's taken, there's a resolution of necessity. That means you're taking it for that and that only. And I'm very concerned about what's going to happen in the future. Are we going to face legal ramifications for moving the library downtown and continuing to resolve that that property up there is all a park? If you look at this letter, it is very, very specific in how you treat property that is taken. And my question, to summarize it all, is real simple. If the gentleman that the property, the company, if a member of their family were to show up in downtown Gladstone three or four years from now, and there were a library here, and that person stopped and asked a question, and that question would be, "Well, they took my property for Parks and a Library. What is the library doing downtown?" I had a conversation with a lawyer, and I presented that to him, and he said, "Well, obviously, the first thing that that former property owner would do would contact an attorney." So I'm deeply concerned about whether or not we have legal exposure there. Were an accident to happen at that entrance to the property, what would happen? It says it's a park. I'm gonna conclude with a quick question. That is, I hope you all go back and look at the 2007 Gladstone Nature Park Resolution, which refers to 1.27 acres for a water tower.
Thank you. Time's up.
Yeah, I know my time's up, and I know how quickly you want me to leave and just stop talking about this. I appreciate that.
No, three minutes. Thank you.
Every time I speak of this, you tell me my time's up. Thank you. I would appreciate a response to some of these concerns, and I will be emailing you all tomorrow. Okay? Let's get this cleaned up.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I really do. And I'm tired of talking about it.
All right, any more business from the audience? Nope. All right, so it's business from the council. Counselor Merschro?
And for me.
Counselor Reisner?
Oh. Mr. Poole, is it- can I ask a question?
Sure, go for it.
Mr. Poole, I've got a question, if I may.
Thank you for giving me a few extra minutes.
Well, I don't know about that, but- so, I know, been up here, you know, as you've been expressing your concerns. So what do you want the city to do?
I don't want the city to do anything except clarify the legal status of the property. I'd like to see a purchase and sale agreement, which is a requirement, a contract is a requirement in the state of Oregon. I've requested it over and over, never seen one. I cannot imagine that this property was taken, and there was no purchase and sale agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Well, you've said that before. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm very concerned.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have sent that twice. It's the Oberson Report, and I've copied the city council, I believe, since 2018.
Yeah, thank you.
For sure. Oh, that was-
Okay, Counselor Reisner?
That was, um, all I-
All you had?
All I had.
Counselor Tracy?
I don't have anything right now.
Counselor Ripley? Well, I get to make up for everybody then because I wasn't here last month. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Reisner.
Sorry. I was gonna ask, um, the, um, item thirteen. I- was Poole, can I- can I ask as to why?
Sure. Um, I thought I was making an appropriate interpretation with the parking. And in discussing with the city attorney, I don't have the authority to make the interpretation. I have the authority to initiate the Planning Commission-
Oh.
-to make an interpretation. So we removed it from the agenda, and we're going to work with Clackamas County and the Planning Commission for them to handle the parking.
Thank you. I was just, you know, wanting to get that.
I was too, but I got ahead of myself, and I appreciate Chad for slowing me down on that one, so.
Thank you, just to clarify this. Okay.
All right, so first is the Locks Commission. Counselor Merschro, at the last meeting, mentioned that someone should be going to the meetings, and since I don't, that he would like to, and I would absolutely love for you to go to the meetings. They're open to the public, so anyone that's interested can certainly go. But I wanna point out that we do not hold a seat at the commission. I wasn't sure if you knew that. All we are is an audience member, a non-participatory audience member. I- I get all the minutes, which I'm more than happy to provide. I get the agendas, and I have very, um, well, probably once every couple of weeks, I have discussions with the commission members on what's going on. The meetings that I went to in the beginning are all regulatory. This is US Army Corps of Engineers stuff. And when you get a whole bunch of them at the table, it's three hours of regulations. It's- it's been- it's been going on now for, what, two years, I believe? Yeah, and they're just now coming to the point where they're trying to get funding for it. So it's- it's a sticky thing because it's a navigable river, and this is a structural impediment that's owned and operated by US Army Corps, and they're trying to transfer ownership to a public corporate entity to take it over. So there's a whole lot of legalese that's involved with this. Where they are right now is they sent a $7 million request to the state for funding to repair the locks. It went all the way through and just about to the second reading, and our legislative session abruptly stopped. So they're just waiting for that second reading. They're- if there's going to be an executive session or a special session, they may try and slip that in, but they're not sure if either of those are gonna happen. And if they don't, then it's gonna have to be next session that they go through it again. So if you'd like to go.
Now, when I originally requested somebody from the Gladstone to be involved, I requested that they were involved at the table.
No, we're not. The commission was formed before that.
I understand we need to be.
Yeah, no, that's-
The commission was formed prior to that, but what they're saying is you- you can be part of the meetings and be there, but you're not a voting member.
Yeah, you- you were in the audience.
Okay, so you can get involved in the conversation?
Not really. There are conversations that I wouldn't wanna jump into.
It's nothing to me. I'm not gonna sit and listen to them for an hour.
That's why I get the agendas and the minutes, because it's- it's stuff I- is way over my head. I'm- it's not fun.
Okay, well, if we're not involved, I'm not so interested anymore in giving them any money.
No, well, I- I agree, and we weren't even invited, except to fork out a couple thousand dollars-
Yeah.
If I remember right.
Well, I- it was before my time, so I'm not sure if they did reach out to us prior to that or not, so.
Not to join.
Yeah.
Last two years, I believe, at least, we were asked to donate $2,500.
Fair, mm-hmm.
Okay, and we did that year, and I requested that we be at the tables so we knew what in the heck we were giving money for.
Yeah.
And give our input, okay, and then we were asked again this year. And I brought out the comment of, "Why aren't we involved?" I mean, it's on the Columbia- or the- the Wamah River. We're obviously a big part of that.
Absolutely.
We bring a heck of a lot of business, uh, river.
Yep.
Okay, because our location, and I think we should be involved, period.
Well, once this public anti-corporate entity is formed, it's gonna look different. Right now, it's just the regulatory phase and the initial funding phase, which again has- was started before our time here. So once that is formed, then I think we'll have more of an opportunity to be at the table, but they're not there yet. That's what they're trying to figure out now, is how that's gonna look.
But they still want money from us.
Yeah, they want. It's a good project. It's gonna be an amazing project that's gonna really impact Gladstone. We're gonna feed it, that's for sure, but, yeah, until they get all of this other stuff figured out, they're fun meetings.
I rest my case.
All right, second, there was mention about the Council Activity Detail Report. And I wanna stress that this was not created by me all by myself. Other cities are heading this direction, and it's for accountability and transparency. It started because I talked to Jackie, and she was not really in the loop on what we were all working on individually, so she needs to be informed. I talked to Counselor Tracy, and he agreed that we all needed to be kept in the loop on the things that we were working on. Citizens were wondering what we were doing, and that's where it all came from. It's inconvenient, I know. It's inconvenient for me too, but I think it's really important that we all understand what we're personally involved with in regards to the city and what we're participating in. So, sorry that it's inconvenient, but I- I think it's important. I think there's value there. All right. Um, next, there seems to be a lot of First Amendment rights being thrown around lately, and the misconceptions have me concerned. And I wanna state this clearly without any misunderstanding that just because we're elected officials or board members, committee members, that we still retain our First Amendment rights. Is that correct, Chad?
In your personal capacity, yes.
Okay. We don't leave those at the door. We still have our First Amendment rights. So when we're threatened and intimidated and accused of things, we can respond. There's no reason that we can't. We don't lose our rights. So I'm gonna take this one step further, and I wanna state that my home and the homes of all of us and the volunteers are our homes. They're not owned or operated by the city or for the city. My home is the place I go to be that wife, mother, daughter, sister. It's not where I go to be the mayor. I received a threatening letter at my home, and I received a call from my family asking if we were being sued. This is not acceptable, and the line has been crossed. The sad part is that it wasn't necessary. I don't know why it was done. I spoke with the attorney. It was the address that they were given. It is just inappropriate, and that is off the table. Next is tolling of 205. At last week's C- C4 meeting, the ODOT consultants managing the I-5 Rose Quarter and the I-205 Abernathy Bridge tolling projects gave a presentation. And I can tell you that it was not received very well at all. It was, I think, the only time that every single one of the people sitting around the table were in unison and very loudly said, "This is crap. Excuse me, but it is not right. It's- we're held hostage because that is our only way across the river other than going through Oregon City, which is not acceptable." It was great. It was a great meeting. I was so proud of all of the other mayors. We were not represented when House Bill 2017 was approved, but our Clackamas County Caucus has been formed, and they are going to fight it as much as they can. And local- locally, we're going to create a subcommittee of C4 where the mayors and elected officials that wanna participate will go and work on making this right instead of it going very badly. It's very sideways. And ODOT's take on it is, "This is what the legislation told us to do, and so we are not going to change it until they tell us otherwise." So it is our opportunity to tell them otherwise. Mark Meek was there, and Rachel Pruska, I believe is her name, was there, and they're the- our Clackamas County representatives that are pulling this caucus together. So stay tuned. I will be keeping people updated. I have yet to talk to anybody that thinks that tolling 205 is a great idea. It's only the Abernathy Bridge. So if- if you have any comments or concerns, let me know. Next is the Metro Helping Together Homeless Wraparound Services Bond that- Roll your eyes. So that's $250 million a year for ten years, and it's to provide wraparound services. If you're a single person making $125,000 or a couple making $200,000, that's where the tax will come into play. Today, some legal challenges were filed, so that's not a done deal. So we will stay on top of that one and let you know. Last- in the- I attended the last CERT meeting where the topic was pandemics, specifically on the COVID-19. It was a great class. I recommend it for everybody. We were informed. We did not leave all panic-stricken and wanting to go buy toilet paper until it would no longer fit in our car. I'm gonna ask that it get taught again, either by the people that put it on or maybe by the county, 'cause I know they've got a pretty active group that's- that's doing it. And if you want updates on COVID-19, please look at the city's website and the county's website instead of relying solely on media spin, because there's been some really interesting theories out there on social media. So that's all that I have. Would someone like to make the motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn. I'll second it.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:58 PM.